Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for July 9th order. If the record will please call for all.
Counselor Kaiser is absent, and in her absence Sadie Carney is serving as the guest counselor. So, welcome.
Welcome.
Counselor Anderson?
President.
Counselor Nenke?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis is absent, and Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions or deletions? Revisions?
I move approval of additions or revisions to the agenda.
Second?
Second by Cook. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. Any comments from counselors? Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be respectful of council rules and limit my comments to two minutes. If there are, though, follow-up questions, we'd be happy -- staff would be happy to provide an information report regarding the water. The advisory was lifted on July 3rd. Testing from today continues to show that drinking water is safe for everyone. During the advisory, we had -- we were in the advisory for 32 days, and only three of those days were above the EPA thresholds. Since you -- since we were last together, the Oregon Health Authority has provided guidance to almost 100 of Oregon's public drinking water providers in the form of new rules for testing cyanotoxin. The rules took effect July 1st. Our commitment to you and the public is to continue to sample drinking water quality and report data as we learn it. We are exceeding the OHA rules for testing and reporting, and we will continue to test Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays through mid-July. We will share those testing results with the community and the media on a regular basis by posting to our website, sending news releases, and through social media. We do have our own testing in place, allowing for samples taken in the morning and to have those results in the afternoon. When I was out on Garin Island on July 4th, Director Fernandez and I saw staff and our contractors working at getting the final equipment in place to pretreat all of Salem's drinking water, as much as 50 million gallons a day with powdered activated carbon. We were able to move from experimentation to full-scale production in less than 20 days. There's an excellent description of the powdered activated carbon process on the city's website. Engineering staff and our contractors are continuing to experiment and adjust the amount of alum and carbon to avoid clogging our roughing filter. We brought the powdered activated carbon offline on July 5th because of some clogging, and we're bringing it back online July 10th. Again, during that time, the water has continued to test at well below EPA thresholds, meaning our filters are doing the job. The powdered activated carbon, though, will be some additional assurance that the water will be safe. Council has asked for stats regarding the water distribution. I have a few to share with you, and again, this is information we can certainly provide in greater detail to you in an information report. The total gallons of bulk water dispensed at the 11 distribution sites was 549,000 gallons. We estimate we served 60,000 vehicles, or 2,000 a day on average. Eighty-five-hundred gallons of water were delivered to homebound persons, and through donations and from our own purchases, we have 35,280 gallons of packaged water available for a future emergency. There will be an after-action report provided to City Council. You will be contacted to take part in that after-action report, so please look forward to an email or a phone call from the City Manager's office to schedule that time for each of you. And with that, I'll close my comments regarding the water.
Great. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I missed your statement in the beginning of your statement about how many days we were over the limit out of how many days we looked at. I hope you could repeat that again, please.
We were in advisory for 32 days, and during those 32 days, we were above EPA thresholds for three of those days.
Were they consecutive, or sort of?
I believe two were consecutive, and the third was not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Cook?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just enough.
Oh, okay. You almost owned a new car there. Okay, very good. Any council just make sure? Okay. Excellent. I have a proclamation then. If I'd like to invite up... About her Singh? Yeah, she's coming up. Whereas Sikh workers arrived in Astoria, Oregon in the early 20th century and settled in the Alderbrook neighborhood of the historic fishing, canning, and logging town, where they worked alongside other immigrants from China and Finland. And whereas the Sikh immigrants founded the Gadhar Party at the Finnish Socialist Hall in Astoria in 1913, whose members fought for independence from British rule in India. And whereas the Gadharites fought and died not only for the freedom of their home country, but for the innate rights of the immigrant worker to lead a dignified and discrimination-free life. And whereas the year 2018 is the 105th anniversary of the historic meeting at the Finnish Socialist Hall in Astoria that recognized the universal right of sovereign nations to independence and self-rule. And whereas on July 14th, 2018, a special event to honor the founding of the Gadhar Party is being held at the Maritime Memorial Park in Astoria, Oregon. Whereas Salem, Oregon is proud to be the home to more than 100 Sikh families, many of whom will be present at the July 14th event. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim July 14th, 2018, as Gadhar Party Founding Day and encourage all residents to honor the legacy of significant contributions made by Sikh immigrants in Oregon dated this 9th day of July 2018.
I would like to say thank you to Mr. Mayor and the city staff and the council members and the community members that are here. So like Mayor said, Sikh community in Oregon, in Astoria, so since 1905. So, part of the community members some left 1918 to make India independent. So, city of Astoria feels so proud, they kept the whole history and record over there. So, they gave us also the park and big plaque on the park. So, we feel so proud to be part of the community here and all over in Oregon. So, thank you so much for letting black missions and be part of your community. And always Sikh community is always helping out any needs, anybody. So, city and also our chief more police departments always help us out, any issues with the community or anybody else. So, would like to say thank you. And I brought some cards, would like to invite everyone if somebody scan, that'd be great. So, July 14th on 11 o'clock in Astoria. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. So, let me just remind you, we have -- we allow three minutes. An orange light will come on at 2:00, and when the red light comes on, if you're speaking, if you would please stop and then let the counselors ask any questions they might have. We appreciate it. And our first person to speak is Joyce Judy. Second will be Gretchen Carnaby, and then Margaret Stevens. So, you can line up. We'll just kind of move along. We've got quite a few folks this evening. So, Joyce, Gretchen, and Margaret.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, councilors. My name is Joyce Judy, and I live in Ward 2. And I am only going to speak briefly on two issues. One is the memorandum of understanding that you will be voting on this evening on the Mission Street Parks Conservancy. I highly would recommend this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the city to have a public-private partnership and to keep our parks beautiful the way we love them. And I think even though it's in the later part of the day, it also like to speak to the proposed resolution that Tom Anderson is putting forth and say that I fully support our reaffirmation of our status as a sanctuary city. And I would also hope that the counselors in the city and the mayor would also work hard to defeat IP-22, which would eliminate sanctuary status here in the state. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Any questions? Right. Thank you very much. Gretchen Carnaby?
Mayor Bennett, councilors and staff. I'm Gretchen Carnaby. For the past 30 years, I've been involved in projects to improve and care for Salem's public landscapes. Originally, I was active in the Bush Conservatory gardeners, and 27 years ago, when a greater need in the park became apparent, I co-founded Friends of Bush Gardens and have led the organization ever since. In addition, during that time, I headed up the 10-year restoration of the LNS Deepwood Historic Gardens. But Bush's pasture park has continued to hold my interest all these years because of its unique plant collections, including its fabulous trees and native plants, and the wonderful historic overlay of the presence of the Kalapulia Indians, the Bush family farmstead, and later the involvement of Lord Inscriber. Plus, it is so centrally located in our community and is loved by so many of our citizens. Friends of Bush Gardens has accomplished a number of projects in the park thanks to a strong partnership with Salem City Parks, a great core of volunteers, and generous financial support from Salem community. Some of our accomplishments in the park in the -- excuse me. FOBG has accomplished a number of projects in the park thanks to a strong partnership with Salem City Parks. Oh, I said that, sorry. Some of our accomplishments in the park include the construction of a Victorian-style gazebo, which serves as a focal point of the municipal rose garden, the restoration of the Bush Conservatory, the design and construction of six interpretive kiosks throughout the park, and currently the rehabilitation of the city's rose gardens. Just as importantly, we built a strong group of volunteers who meet each Tuesday to help care for the park's gardens and mixed borders. Last year, Friends of Bush Gardens volunteers contributed over 3,000 hours of gardening to the park, equivalent to about one and a half full-time staff. You can see our work by visiting the conservatory's collection of Victorian-era plants and taking a walk around the conservator -- greater area of the conservatory and around the barn and southwest of Bush Barn. In addition, we support Tom Beatty, the city horticulturist, in such things as ordering traditional tulips, occasional help in maintaining the rhododendron hillside, and supplying additional plants for the park. Despite our best efforts, the park needs more time, resources, and leadership than Friends of Bush Gardens and unincorporated group could give it. Therefore, we decided to incorporate as the Mission Street Parks Conservancy and become an independent nonprofit. This step will allow us to more effectively raise money for the park, employ staff, and take on greater responsibility for the care of the park's plant material. Bush's pasture park is a gem of an urban park, and we want to ensure that it remains so for many more generations. I hope that the council will vote in support of the memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Gretchen, just personally, thank you so much for all those years of work.
Oh, my pleasure.
You have --
Oh, it's been fantastic. It's an addiction.
Really, really great. Now, Tom had a question for you. Tom Anderson?
What?
Gretchen, don't leave.
Sorry.
I joined with the mayor. I live right next to the park, and I ride my bike through it every day, and I see the wonderful work you've done, and thank you very much.
You're not speeding in the park, are you?
I'm riding my bicycle.
That was a yes or no?
Yeah. That is what we call in my business, a non-responsive answer. In my business, we call it a confession. Yeah. But I pulled this so we can have a fuller discussion of it later, but I just wanted to thank you and everybody else who's here on part of that in case you're not here for the later discussion. So, thank you.
Well, I plan to stick around, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. We'll have Margaret Stevens, Michael Slater, then Tom Ellis.
Mayor Bennett and councilors, my name is Margaret Stevens, and I live in Ward 1. And these comments are about the proposed memorandum of understanding between the city and Mission Street Parks Conservancy. And my understanding is that the volunteer organization Friends of Bush Park had not been satisfied with the city's level of maintenance of Bush Park, and they have concerns about the Oregon white oaks in the park, and for that reason have formed the Conservancy. So first, I do want to say that all the work that park staff and volunteers have done to care for Bush Park and other parks is very much greatly appreciated. However, I think that the Bush Park volunteers have been encouraged to take the wrong path to achieve their goals. Parks Conservancies are generally established in cities where public parks have deteriorated significantly, and they are funded by private and corporate donors. But Salem's parks, including Bush and Pringle, are not in that state of severe deterioration. I wonder, then, how can partially privatizing and contracting out maintenance of any of our parks then be justified? Contracting out means transferring work, services, and responsibility from the public sector to the private sector. If more parks maintenance is needed, then should we not support the hiring of more permanent full-time public workers who can earn a living family wage and benefits instead of contingent workers hired by a private entity who will likely not earn those wages and benefits? To do the latter deteriorates our community and family stability. Also, if it's thought that park staff don't know enough about caring for our trees, why not allow more maintenance workers and other staff to be certified as arborists? I believe there are a few that are willing to do that. Parks maintenance, in my opinion, can use greater funding, primarily for habitat restoration and control of invasive plants, but why funding via private entities? I guess I may have to skip ahead. Basically, parks funding should remain sourced from public taxes and be distributed to all parks based on analysis of the need of all residents of Salem for open space and recreation and for the maintenance of healthy natural areas and habitat restoration. So, in summary, because the Conservancy idea is not needed, and because it will undermine our public workers and living wages, and because it's a step towards privatizing publicly-owned assets, I urge you not to approve this proposal, but instead work with the volunteers to find other ways to achieve their goals.
Any questions for Ms. Stevens? That's very helpful. Thank you. Michael Slater, Tom Ellis, and Lori Doherty.
Dear Mayor Bennett, councilors and staff. My name is Mike Slater, and I'm a resident of Ward 7. I'm also a board member of the Mission Street Parks Conservancy. I'm here tonight to support the proposed memorandum of understanding between the Conservancy and the city. This MOU creates a framework for those members of the community who are passionate about our iconic parks to collaborate in a meaningful and effective way with the city. It is a flexible agreement that neither delegates to the Conservancy any current function the city -- that the city fulfills, nor obligates the Conservancy to take any specific action. It also does not, nor is it intended to, displace or outsource any function currently provided by city employees. Instead, it outlines a range of activities the Conservancy may take with approval of the city. Examples of those activities include the propagation and replacement of the city's flowering tree collection, many of which are near the end of their lifespan, mapping the park's trees and shrubs in a GIS database and making that information available to the city and the public, securing funding and pro bono expertise to enhance underused or neglected parts of the park, providing public tours and other programs to help visitors understand and appreciate the park's beauty, and recruiting and supervising volunteers to care for many landscape -- the many landscape and flower beds and mixed borders that make Bush's pasture park a unique destination in the city. If you approve this MOU, you'll be essentially ratifying the kind of work Friends of Bush Gardens has been doing in the park for the past 27 years and supporting its continued work but under a new name and with a more ambitious agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'd also like to note that at one point, the city had seven full-time horticulturists, it's the fancy name for gardeners, on staff. Today, we have one for the whole city. So whereas Bush's pasture park used to have three and a half people assigned as gardeners, they now only have one who has to split his time with other responsibilities. So our hope here is that we can add essentially through community support a position back that has been eliminated over the years instead of displacing any current employees. Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
Thank you. Mr. Slater, just a question about the difference between the work that the Friends are doing now and the Conservancy as outlined in the MOU. It seems like in reading it, there's a difference between being able to raise funds and being able to do the work. Can you kind of explain the difference that led to this?
The Friends of Bush Gardens is an unincorporated association that works through the support of the Salem Art Association. As such, it had a limited ability to employ staff, to hire consultants, to seek grants because it was not a freestanding 501(c)(3). And it also had an interest in kind of establishing a more structured way to go about doing its work. It had been, I don't want to say episodic, but you know, as things came up, they addressed it, and they want to move to a plan that is a little bit more formal where they have work plans and are working off kind of multi-year framework, so they felt that a nonprofit corporation would be the best way to provide that.
Thank you. And Mr. Slater, you said that there were at 1.7 staff, and now we have one for horticultural work in all the gardens. I just wanted to confirm with Director Fernandez that those numbers seem to be square. Is that right?
Yeah, we have one. I don't know what the -- Jennifer Keller, our parks manager, is whispering in my ear. I don't know what the history is. When parks came to Public Works in 2008 or '09, it was already, you know, a lot of the cuts had already taken place, so I don't know what the history is in terms of the number of horticulturists.
Thank you, Director Fernandez. And Mr. Slater, how long has Friends of Bush Gardens -- I'm sorry, I know that Joyce had given that was 27 years?
27 years.
1991.
Okay.
Founded in 1991.
And how many members?
We can't pay membership because we're under a support committee of SAA.
How many people show up for your work?
We can't have -- you can't do that.
Oh, sorry.
We have about 50 -- we have about 50 active volunteers in about 2025 on any given Tuesday.
Any given Tuesday. Thank you, Mr. Slater.
Thank you.
Tom Ellis, Lori Doherty, and then Shalasaw and I, Crier. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Ellis, and I'm a resident of Salem. I live at 4553 Ferdel Drive, and I'm an American citizen. I'm speaking in enthusiastic support of Tom Anderson's resolution, that's item 5A, condemning the Trump regime's heinous zero-tolerance policy and affirming our support for immigrants, especially since nearly all of us here tonight are descended from immigrants. We just celebrated the 4th of July, which commemorates another resolution, the Declaration of Independence. So in support of Counselor Anderson's resolution, I would like to read a brief and familiar excerpt from that iconic document. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Note that he said "all men" and not simply "all Americans." And in the 18th century, "men" was commonly used as a generic term, like the German word "mention," referring to all human beings, men, women, and children. This is our shared major premise. This is what makes us Americans. But let's cut to the quick. Another quote. "When a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to establish new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of immigrants and minorities since January 2017. And such is now the necessity that constrains us as a community to register our shared rejection of these profoundly un-American policies of cruelty and intolerance." Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Lori, Ms. Crier, and Paul -- Chris, Cricer will be...
Hi. Mayor Bennett and councilors, my name is Lori Doherty. I live in Ward 2, and I would like to support Counselor Tom Anderson's resolution concerning zero-tolerance policy at the border. This policy has caused untold harm and grief among immigrant and refugee families and provoked outrage across the country. As a city that prides itself on its welcoming and inclusive qualities, it's really appropriate that Salem take a stand in solidarity with the people who are affected by this policy. And we see so many times in so many ways in this day and age that it's the cities and the states that need to take up, you know, the cause of decency and the ideals that we are holding in our country because the federal government is not doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crier. And then Paul... Chris. Chris.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and city council members. So I'm here this evening -- oh, sorry. My name is Shalasaw Crier, and I live in Ward 2. So I'm here this evening to speak in favor, strongly in favor, of Councilmember Anderson's resolution, signifying our continued resolve as a sanctuary city here in Salem and speaking out against the harmful national immigration policies. This morning, I spoke at the IP-22 rally, and I mentioned that right now, we are on the precipice of a historical moment in our country, really the identity of our country. And are we going to stand back and let the clock be turned backwards on who we are and who we want to be? Right now, with IP-22, we are looking at the threat of removal of our sanctuary state. And right now, with our immigrant community literally under attack, it stands to us as a state, it stands to us as a city, to stand with them in solidarity, to let them know that we value them in our community, and furthermore, that we will stand and protect them. That's what this resolution says. It reaffirms our commitment to the members of our community. And when we have people living in fear, living in stress, under anxiety, dealing with depression, kids shouldn't have to be afraid of going to school because they're scared that their parents won't be there when they come back. And that's what I have heard when talking to teachers in Salem Kaiser School District, that some kids have literally been afraid to go to school. People shouldn't be afraid, women shouldn't be afraid of talking about, of reporting harm to them, particularly sexual assault or any other sort of crime, because they're scared of deportation of themselves or others. That's not who Salem is, and I strongly urge you to adopt Councilmember Anderson's resolution. Again, to reaffirm that commitment that we care for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Paul Chrisel.
Mayor members of the council, my name is Paul Chrisel. I live in Ward 2. I'm here to fully support and enthusiastically support Tom Anderson's resolution. He started out this evening saying the Pledge of Allegiance. The last lines were "with liberty and justice for all." Didn't say just for white guys like me, it's "for all." And the events... And the events moved to a proclamation recognizing the value that the seat community has provided as immigrants to this community, as other immigrants have provided. And a couple of years ago, you passed the inclusivity resolution saying that Salem is going to be a place of love and inclusion, not a place of hate. So this resolution is perfectly in line with what this city has said it stands for, and I support that fully. And if we recognize that this image of children and toddlers being pulled away from their parents, I have a two-year-old granddaughter, I can't even imagine, imagine what it would be like to see my daughter and her husband have my granddaughter ripped away from them and not even know where they are. This is horrifying. We should be horrified by this. This is not simply a matter of politics. This is disgusting and abusive, and we ought to change, we ought to take care of that in this community, pass this resolution, does it. All this talk about the right way to enter the country. We closed off, this administration closed off access to the bridge where people could present themselves to request asylum. That is a legal way to enter this country. We've cut that off. We're cutting off access to people that are fleeing incredible violence, fleeing incredible threats to their lives, and we won't even allow them the right to present their case. And we're ripping their children's apart and putting them in detainment as if they're criminals. There's nothing criminal about presenting yourself for asylum. My great-grandfather came to this country in the 1880s under an immigration law that said the right way to come in was to be a white person. That's all it said. If you were a white person and you kept yourself above the law for three years, you were granted citizenship, and that's what happened to my grandfather. So let's be honest, this is all about race and racism. That has nothing to do with what's the appropriate immigration policy in this country. This is about racism. It's because people are coming up whose skin is not white. Let's end this, let's put Salem on record as saying, "We are against that, we oppose that, we stand for love, we stand for children and families, and we're going to support the plight of people coming to this country and welcome them with open arms." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joyce, you signed up, Joyce Judy, you signed up on another sheet for another batch of... No, you don't get to do it that way. Why don't you come up now and do it? You're talking on a specific... I appreciate the strategy, and I'll give you about two minutes to summarize it real quick here.
Again, hello, I'm Joyce Judy, I live in Ward 2. I wanted also to speak to an informational item that's towards the very end of the agenda regarding the change of land use zoning code from a commercial office to commercial general. And what they want to do is that they want to put in a storage facility. And the way the code reads is that it says, it has to have a demonstration that the proposed zone change is equally or better suited for the property than the existing zone. I don't believe personally that commercial general putting in a storage facility is better than putting in an office space, not for the city and not for the town. I'm speaking to this, and it's not even in my neighborhood, and I just find out about it, and it's already done, in effect. So the planning commission approves something like this without really considering the true value of a mixed use. Oh, well, down the street, we have other commercial general, therefore, we should have more commercial general. No, I don't think that that should be the case. Why not housing? I think we need to stop building so much commercial, retail, so much industrial in this city, and every time somebody wants to change the code, all they have to do is say, "Oh, look down the street, there's an industrial place, so let's change the code because everybody else is industrial down the street." So we end up being a huge, big city of nothing but commercial, retail, and industrial. And this is going to kill our city in the ultimate scheme of things. I think that the city council needs to start taking a closer look at land use and stop what the planning commission is doing as far as rubber stamping anybody who comes in, and then the council turning around and rubber stamping what the planning commission tells them to do. So that's kind of my thoughts on that.
Great, thank you very much.
And it probably makes no difference, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay. Jan, do you want to, you and Gary want to line up and tell us what's going on on Coral?
City council members, hi, everybody. I know, I'm Jan Kaidos, I live at 3797 June Avenue Northeast. Again, this is at 2275 Coral. Last two weeks, there are squatters in that house now. Bikes are chained to the fence, I have called the police twice, but they come out, every one of them has been absolutely superb, they have been really good, but their hands are tied. There is no TLC, trespass letter of consent. I don't know what else we can do. I can honestly say, one of the officers, I believe it was the second time I called the police, Ben Rudell, he came back two days later, because he was here on July 2nd, he came back two days later, yes, to update. He tried to get ahold, the last time I was here, I mentioned to Kate Gaffel for property servicing through David Burgess and Associates, because we've left a couple messages, she's never returned it. He has tried it, and, whoops, not, usually I say too loud, but anyway, nobody's ever gotten back to anybody, nobody. But he came by to let us know that. It's getting to be a bit much, actually. We're actually back to not sleeping, we don't want to leave the house, and there's so many people around, and this is, you know, all the squatters and a lot of prostitutes. I can't believe what has been going on in the last two weeks. I mean, it's horrendous, and it's just like, it's gotten overt and beyond that something needs to be done. We're getting real tired of this. I mean, we don't know what else to do. I can honestly say, after I called one of the times the police, I did call on July 2nd at 9:10 in the morning, I left a message for Mr. Morales and stuff to, that, you know, there's squatters in this house. We need a TLC, somebody's got to be able to find out something. But nobody can do anything? This isn't working. I don't like living like this. And these guys, you know, we've seen them have box cutters in their back pocket, we have a scanner, like I said last time. We know they have guns, we know they have knives. I don't want to be any part of that. I retired. I'm supposed to be playing, not stressing and stuff, so anyway, we've, one of the things, you know, there's no electricity in that house, there's no water, so how's that working with everybody staying there for two weeks? And we don't see them, there's like three windows in the back that are open. This is open entry. And they're going not from our side of the house, but the other side of the house, because the neighbor came over about a week ago, he would be here tonight, but his job takes him out of town, but he will be here at the next meeting. He goes, lot of traffic between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m., lots. Something's got to be taken care of. I don't know, do we need to go to a state representative? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name's Gary Kaidos, I live in Ward 6, Jan's my wife. Okay, this is my ninth visit regarding the 2275 property. Some things have been accomplished, like the signs for the street, no parking, which is great, they mowed the yard, tore a shed down, cut a tree down, I thank you for doing that. But regarding a TLC, the mayor himself, here several meetings ago, talked to code enforcement and said that something could be done with finding these people. I can't believe, in this day and age, with the knowledge of computers, that nobody can find out who owns that property. I mean, it's ridiculous to me. A TLC should be made, they should have something where they have to do something with this property. When you're living like that, I'd like it to be next door to your house and see how long it would last if all you guys had to live like this. I can't finish saying what I got on the paper, you guys need to do something with it.
Norman, did you want to say anything? You look like you had thoughts.
My only thoughts are that I can offer my condolences to the Kaidos's for this particular situation. A trespass letter of consent, by its very name, requires the consent of the owning property for us to be able to access the site and do anything regarding enforcement actions on the property. And those are, of course, actions that would take place through the police department, so I wouldn't speak specifically to that, but as mentioned by Mr. Kaidos, we, for code compliance, have done all that we can to make sure that the property is well-maintained and secured according to our standards and rules. And so any of the disruptive behavior that is being experienced, if it is something that can be addressed through police action, so be it, but again, the trespass letter of consent by legislative requirements alone are the sorts of things that are required to have the property owner's consent. Officer Morales, as well as Brady Rogers, his supervisor, have both reached out to the property owners or the custodial entity involved in managing that property. We have tried on probably now six or seven times to try to get a response.
Who's the custodial entity that owns, that has that property?
That's what I was just trying to look up here and now. It is a company that is not here in town, it is a company that manages multiple properties of this nature, and I'm just trying to pull up right now the last email that I had on this, but it's a company that we work with remotely. We've not been able to secure, Safeguard Properties is the name of the company, we've not been able to secure a meeting with any particular group. Should a meeting occur, it will be because, again, of their voluntary desire, their consent to do so.
Counselor Cook?
So just to clarify, you have been able to reach the owner?
Through the custodial property.
So, sorry, you have been able to reach the custodial property manager? And the custodial property manager would still not be the direct entity to grant the TLC?
We, without citing everything involved here, they are not the property owner themselves, but they've not been willing to give us any further information that I'm aware of just through my correspondence with staff on how to contact the property owner directly.
Because what I'm looking at from my end and hearing the testimony these past nine times is, if there's illegal activity happening, we can look at that during and after the fact when officers come out to be able to do enforcement. If it's a blighted property, we could go through that, but it sounds like it's not blighted?
No, they've been mowing the grass, they've taken off the shed that was in the backyard, and they have, to the best of my knowledge, they have secured the property.
So the term that was used was squatters, but that would imply that there's been no lease. It sounds like you can't determine whether or not there is if you're not able to get the information from the property management company, is that what I'm understanding?
That's right.
And so that's the holdup?
I wouldn't say it's a holdup, per se. The property management individuals that we have worked with have simply said that they have done what they know they need to do to meet our code for compliance, and that they are not interested, nor their property owner, rather, that they're representing, is not interested in pursuing any further actions such as a TLC. So once they have met all the requirements and all the necessary rules that we have before us for managing a property, keeping it secure, keeping it safe, if they do not wish to take any further actions, such as, again, a voluntary act like a TLC, then we are pretty much at the end of our possible ways of doing things.
And TLC would still, that would imply that it's not the people living there, which would, again, go back to squatters?
The trespass letter of consent is an agreement, or rather, a letter of consent from the property owner that would allow, in this case, the police department to access the property and deal with anything that is taking place on that site.
Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo and underscore the Kaidos's aggravation with this situation, and I, my words aren't going to help you any, but I completely sympathize. I actually do drive through your neighborhood regularly, I did it just this weekend, just to kind of keep an eye, to see where things are, to kind of, the other properties, to see how they're doing with the collecting of the trash and cleaning it up. I know that that seems to have stalled out. I did just look up on the Marion County Assessor's website, just for your information, the owner is an estate, so appears that the person is deceased, and the address is listed in Colorado.
That's the daughter.
Okay, so that's...
She don't want nothing to do with it.
So I don't have any answers for you right now, but I want you to know that I am not going to take my eye off of this, we're going to try to figure something out. I don't know what yet, but we're going to try to figure something out.
When the police come, they say...
Just a minute, just a minute, Mr....
We can't have a conversation lacrosse like this, sorry.
We can't do it that way, so...
Counselor Anderson?
And this is really a question that maybe is directed more toward the city legal staff, and that is, is there some sort of ordinance that talks about a public nuisance and what we can do if we declare someplace a public nuisance? And that's just a different way to come at it, and, you know, if everything that is described is really happening, it certainly sounds like it's moving toward that sort
Tom Cipani, I'm an assistant city attorney, sitting in for Mr. Atchison. There is a public nuisance section in our code. It pertains mostly to things like, you know, having the house be dilapidated, not being kept up, the sort of behaviors that are being complained of, if they, you know, rise to the level of violating our noise ordinance or whatnot, then that would be another avenue that we could take a look at.
So really, with the public nuisance, it's more of a status of the house as opposed to the behavior taking place in and around the house?
For the most part, yeah, but I haven't looked at that ordinance in a while, so I don't...
Thank you.
Counselor Nicky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would challenge that the dwelling is secure if there's people in it who are not renters or someone living there, so can we not just, anytime someone is in the facility, just keep contacting this safeguard organization and say, "No, you need to get back out here again and again and again and again," if that's an everyday basis? Because it's not secure if people are in it.
Well, if people are in it, that is an if. I don't mean to, you know, cast a shadow of doubt on any of the testimony that's been given, but at the same time, if our code officers visit the site and they see no points of ingress or egress that have not been secured, I mean, when they go to the site, let me just try to keep it a little more simple, and they see that the windows are covered and that the door is closed, and when they see that everything is, again, secure, then there is nothing, as I think Mr. Cipani was explaining, there is nothing there that we have to say that this is an attractive nuisance. So for code compliance, it may be that there are people in the backyard, I have no dispute about that. There may be that there are people that are somehow sneaking in, but if so, if they close the window after doing so, or if they're sneaking in the backyard but don't really break anything that is securing the property itself, meaning the structure itself, then we have nothing as far as hard, credible, obvious evidence that we can use to say that the property is no longer secured. So it's as much a limitation of our ordinance and how we can manage the security of a structure as it is anything. To Counselor Anderson's question earlier about the nuisance part, it would be deemed an attractive nuisance if, as Mr. Cipani explained, there was a collapsed roof and people could climb in and people could squat in that regard. But in this case, in every instance that Officer Morales has visited the site, the property has been secured, it has been closed up to the best that we would require it, so our options are very much limited as a result.
So if the door is closed and not locked, that's secure?
Well...
And if a window is, the latch broken and people just open it up and climb in?
Some of this, I may not have all the details, but I fully trust that our code officers, when they visit these sites, if they see that it is meeting all the requirements of what they look for, for a secured site, then, yeah, we're doing our job. All I can really say...
I would encourage the neighbors, then, to take photos of people climbing through the windows and walking through the doors.
Certainly.
If we need some kind of evidentiary that we can't get with a clandestine... If we need some kind of evidentiary that we can't get with a clandestine camera set, because it sounds like this just keeps going on and on and on.
Chief, did you want to join us in this?
Sure.
You're welcome.
Mayor and counsel, Jerry Moore, chief of police. Some great questions. Norm has actually answered the questions very well. When we don't own a property, we can't enforce trespass because it's not ours. That's the simplest answer I can give you, which is the reason why we try and secure trespass letters of consent, because it then, it's the owner telling us, "If someone's on our property, you have the ability to arrest them." That doesn't exist at this current time, and I think Norm has very well described the frustrations with this home and many others that I've dealt with over the course of my career, where we have absentee owners or owners that don't see it on a daily basis. It doesn't impact them, and quite frankly, they don't want to get involved. It's out of sight, out of mind, and that's one of the issues. The other thing I want to address is nuisance abatement. There is a nuisance abatement ordinance, and it may be different than what Norm deals with, which is health and some of those issues. The nuisance abatement ordinance does deal with criminal activity, but you have to have specific activity that's outlined in the nuisance ordinance, and there's a variety of issues. A lot of them have to do with drugs, assaults, serious crime. And trust me, on a home like this, we keep track of that to try and make sure that we're not missing a piece of property that might come under the nuisance ordinance. And if it did come under the nuisance ordinance, we would give notice, and then ultimately it would come to this council, where the council would have the authority to find, levy a fine for every day that that continued to occur. So, that's what we're faced with right now, and I don't know if there's other questions I could respond to.
Counselor McCoy.
I guess my question would be to the chief or to Norman, what would you like to see done by this body to change the ordinance to the point where you have leverage to go out and deal with issues like this? Because this is, to me, I'm completely with the folks, it's ridiculous. If this was in anybody's neighborhood, we'd feel the same way. If it was next door to me, I'd be down here every week, too, asking, "Why can't you fix this?" This is, to me, almost a common sense issue, and I'm sort of tired of hearing all the legal reasons why we can't do it. Now, let's figure out a way to fix it and make it legal for you guys to go do what you need to do, but what do we need to pass to get this thing fixed? This has been going on for...
A year?
Year and a half?
There were times that it'll...
Yeah. And it's the same thing, we hear the same answers, "Well, it's not working, so let's work out some way to fix it."
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to underscore what my colleague from Ward Four had to say there. And to me, I've asked this question before, and I haven't gotten the right answer in my mind yet, but I think the only way we're going to get their attention is if we can start fining them.
Yeah.
And I think if we don't have the ability in our code to do that, I would like to explore that possibility. The only way, it's a bank, or it's a property management, the only way we're going to get their attention is in the pocketbook. So, if we can start levying fines, I think that's probably our only path to getting them to really care about what's happening in our city, and I would like to explore that.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
I just want to second what my colleague said as well, because this is, we have so many people that need homes, we have so many neighborhoods that need investment, and to let something lie fallow until it falls onto this derelict list, to let something go rent-free, whether it's because there's people squatting in it or because it's not going to its full use, I feel like even though it may not be in their agenda, even though it may not be in their world, since they may live out of state, this is important for us as a community, just as important as the other motions that are in front of council tonight, because it affects our livability.
Okay. Well, I've tried this before, I'll try it again. I really have a sense of counsel. We want you to return with recommendations for changes in probably SRC 98140 or one of the other nuisance ordinance areas that would give you the tools you need. I thought we had made that pretty clear last November, but I don't think we're being, I hope it's clear even tonight. This, I really, I love seeing Gary and Jan. Unfortunately, we keep seeing them under these terrible circumstances. And so, I'd really ask you now to go to the, go back to the law books or go back to whatever you have to do and see what you can come up with that gives us some ability to, whether it's find them or declare it a nuisance, look at whether it's derelict. I don't care how you get there, but let's try to get there once and for all. I thought this was clear before. I want to try it one more time and see. So, we're a year from now, we're not doing the same thing, if that's... Counselor, you agree with me on this? Yeah, just nod our heads. It's okay. Okay. Is that sound fair?
That's clear.
Okay. All righty. Let's move on to the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.3A by Counselor Anderson. Okay, we've got the minutes of the June 1st council minutes, then June 25th council meeting, and then we've got intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with ODOT, provide up to 8,000 reimbursement funds to the city through the mortar carrier safety action plan during fiscal year 1819, the money to be used to inspect truckers coming through town, to have folks on the police staff stopping them to make sure that they're operating safely.
That's the consent calendar. All those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Public hearings.
Okay. The city council will now hold a public hearing to consider the city-initiated annexation of territory located at 3641 Boone Road Southeast and withdrawal of the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by testimony from the following. Applicable neighborhood association is limited to five minutes, and other interested parties are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
I'm Pamela Cole, planner with Community Development Department, and I am presenting the staff report for health hazard annexation case 720 for property at 3641 Boone Road Southeast. I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and presentation into the record. This annexation territory is contiguous to the city limits on the north side at the Kubler Boulevard Southeast right-of-way. The territory is 1.88 acres and includes .23 acres of Boone Road Southeast right-of-way. It's one parcel, contains now a single-family dwelling and a storage yard. The comprehensive plan designation for the property is industrial. You can see it's surrounded by other industrial designation properties. There are some commercial and industrial-commercial properties in the area as well. The zoning currently is Marion County Industrial General, and with the corresponding industrial comprehensive plan designation in that zoning, the property would be designated City of Salem Industrial General when it's annexed. This is a voter-exempt health hazard annexation. It's a little unusual. The city was doing some work in Boone Road and damaged a septic drain field, and we tried to find out if there was some way to fix that, but it turned out that the existing conditions on the property precluded re-establishment of that drain field. So, the city asked the property owners to consent to annexation in order to receive city water and sewer services, and the city executed a settlement agreement that required the city to initiate the annexation and pay the annexation fees and delay the annexation effective date for three years. It's been a couple of years since we had that resolution, 2016-16. And staff also evaluated the annexation for the other relevant criteria, including compliance with comprehensive plan and state goals, and it allows orderly and efficient and timely provision of urban services and would serve the public interest. Therefore, staff recommends that council find that the property owners signed a valid consent, determine that the annexation is exempt from vote due to the health hazard, determine that the annexation satisfies the criteria, and adopt Order 201805ANX, apply City of Salem Industrial General zoning, and withdraw the territory from Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. That concludes my presentation. I do have an aerial photo on the next slide, if you'd like me to go there, just so you can see the property as well.
Counselor Osick would like to see it. He's just curious. He's curious how you hit that drain field. Nope.
There, thank you.
We have no one signed up to testify. Council, have any questions? Yes?
Sadie Carney, guest counselor from Ward Wone. Kind of as a matter of general land use curiosity, I'm not sure why there was a delayed effective date of annexation for three years. That was in agreement with the property owner?
Yes, because it was the city that caused the problem that required us to annex the property in order to provide the services.
And did we fix the health hazard prior to that three-year...
Oh, yes, yes. They received the services at the time.
Okay.
So, they have had the services. It's just a formality to...
That's a great comment. That was not clear when I read this.
Yes, we're just trying to finish the process and officially annex the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Did that answer your question, Counselor?
Pamela?
I have one, too.
Yes.
My question was answered by most of your presentation about the Kubler Boone and how did it happen. And you and I had a discussion...
Could you speak into the mic, Tom?
What? You and I had a discussion earlier about the tax rate of annexation, and I understand that that is not something with which you are familiar, appropriately so, but I do have a question on the back, and this is true for the other annexation. It says after the annexation, there will be a tax rate impact on urban renewal. And I'm just curious as to how an area that is not in an urban renewal area is subject to a tax rate on urban renewal, and maybe someone else could answer that question for me. If not, I would like, oh, good, here goes deputy city manager.
If you'd like an answer, we can bring one back. I have an idea of what that might be, but I don't want to...
Okay, thanks, yeah. That's not going to preclude my voting on this. I'm just curious about that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, very good. Public hearings closed. Counselor Nanki.
I would move staff recommendation.
Second by McCoy.
Discussion?
Nope. Pretty logical process.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, and our next hearing.
The city council will now hold a public hearing to consider the annexation of territory located at 2487 Robbins Lane Southeast and withdrawal of the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. The criteria applicable to the decision is SRC 260.060C. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the applicable criteria or other criteria which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing in person or in writing, or failure to provide statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to provide the parties and the city council an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by the testimony from the following. The applicant is limited to 10 minutes. Applicable neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes, and other interested parties are limited to three minutes. The applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony, limited to issues raised during the public testimony. Again, a yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Good evening again. I'm Pamela Cole, planner with Community Development Department, and I'm also presenting a staff report for annexation C 722 for property at 2487 Robbins Lane Southeast. So, I'd like to enter the staff report, attachments, and presentation into the record. This annexation territory is contiguous to city limits on the west and on the south. It's a territory of .53 acres, including .08 acres of right-of-way in Robbins Lane Southeast. This is one parcel with a single-family dwelling, and the owners signed the annexation petition. Because the property is contiguous to city limits, annexation would be required if they decide to obtain city services for future development. This territory is designated developing residential in the comprehensive plan map, as are all the adjacent territories. The nearest properties to the south are zoned RA, residential agriculture, and RS, single-family residential. We also have a few single-family residential subdivisions to the west. The subject property is currently zoned UT5, urban transition, five-acre in Marion County, which is consistent with the developing residential comprehensive plan. Therefore, the property would be automatically zoned RA, residential agriculture, when it's This is a more straightforward voter-exempt annexation. The proposed annexation, in this case, would not be referred to the voters, because Senate Bill 1573 allows that if the petition is submitted by all the owners and the properties within the urban growth boundary, subject to comprehensive plan and contiguous to city limits, it would be exempt from voter approval. But council has the authority to decide yes or no on the annexation. Staff evaluated the annexation according to the relevant criteria, again, including comprehensive plan and state goals, whether the annexation will allow provision of orderly, efficient, and timely provision of urban services, and whether it serves the public interest, and we found that it did meet the criteria.
Very good. No one from the public signed up. Any questions from council? Counselor McCoy?
I guess this is a question, maybe a point here. I'm looking at my staff report, I don't know why I didn't notice earlier. When you get the summary and background, it says this is a petition-initiated annexation of .53 acres located at 6719 Devon Avenue Southeast.
That's just a typo. Sorry I missed that one.
I want to make sure the typo is brought up before we do something, doesn't it?
Something for the last...
Yeah. So, that whole summary and background, I'm not sure if it's accurate, if it's the right owners, or all that, so...
Does the record need correction?
I think it's just the address. The acreage is correct, the vicinity map is correct, the owners are correct. So, yes, I just missed changing the address, because that was the one at the previous hearing in June.
Thank you for admitting it was you. I would have said, "Yeah, we just missed it."
It's always me.
Okay. Thank you.
The order is proper, so the order and the ordinance would be correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, Counselor McCoy?
Close the hearing.
It's your motion.
I move staff recommendation.
Second by Hoy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Move on to special orders of business. Which would you like to do first, Counselor?
Your call.
Ah, let's do 3A first.
I move the staff recommendation with respect to the memorandum of understanding with the mission, street parks, conservancy.
Second.
Second by Cook. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. We had a pretty thorough discussion of this in the public comments. I think this is a terrific idea. I- a couple of questions I have is I'm a little uncertain to what the designated area is, and I think in the aerial photograph, it's the area around the Bush House and the gardens and the rose gardens around there.
That is correct, Counsel.
Okay, okay. And that's where I see the folks working all the time when I'm riding my bike at the proper speed limit through the park. My other question is, especially if I'm going uphill, my other question is, this seems like a good way to extend in our time of limited fiscal ability on all these matters with the parks and other thing. It just seems like a good idea to expand a nice public-private partnership. I'm wondering if there are other groups of the same nature at other of our major parks, Riverfront, Wallace Marine, any of the other regional parks?
Nope, this is the only one. We do have thousands, tens of thousands of volunteer hours that are provided to parks throughout the system, but this is the only formal agreement of this nature.
Okay, okay. Well, I would hope that it works well, and there might be encouragement to enter into other types of agreement. I do have a question about the terms and the termination on page seven. It says it's in effect through July of 2020. It can be extended at two-year intervals. Is there an option on that, or does it just have to be renegotiated? And then it also says, including up to and including the end of July of 2024. So what happens at the end of 2024? Are we anticipating we're going to have a new agreement, or is it going to end, or what'll happen then?
Well, we're hopeful that this is an agreement that can go on for many, many years. As we had discussions with the organizers, there was a desire originally to incorporate a much larger area of the park. We had discussions that we felt it was good to start small and to be successful and to show success, and as there's more success and more people and more money generated, you know, we can expand the areas where they can provide assistance. So the idea is that we're going to look at it every couple of years, just kind of see where we're at, what changes can be made, and the 2024 date is not an end date. We hope it's a continuation.
And I would suggest that, and I'm sure this is part of what you've already talked about, I guess I would call it the Compton, Wally Reed, Catherine Reed, Rhododendron Garden there on the slope there, that a lot of volunteer effort and time went into going down to the lower part of the park, just north of Lefell Street, and that seems to be another area that there's a lot of volunteer work, and maybe we could encourage that as well.
Absolutely. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to speak to the testimony we had earlier from Margaret about the transfer of work from city staff to volunteer groups, and just to second her caution. I love the idea of neighbors and neighborhoods being able to contribute and experience the experience of the park and also take ownership of those public spaces, but I want us to be mindful of the sustainability. It's important that we're all able to chip in in times of- times where we're feeling lean, that we're all able to chip in and make these systems work, but they're not a full stopgap. So things may change and may evolve, and as Mr. Slater pointed out, this MOU allows for a lot of flexibility, so I certainly appreciate that. But it doesn't sound like in this agreement that it would be preventing future staff involvement, that it would be preventing future city maintenance on this. We wouldn't be turning it over to a single volunteer group. We still maintain our commitment to parks as a city. Is that what I'm understanding?
Absolutely. When this was proposed to us, our staff did some research as to exactly what conservancies do, and obviously the biggest one is the Central Park Conservancy in New York City. And in every part of research, and I believe that the organizers believe this, this is a partnership. This is a partnership with a group of citizens that want to do more and help us do more with this park. This is not a takeover of the park or an ownership interest in the park by any stretch of the imagination. It is to work together in a much more formal method, and that's what we envision, and that's what we're going to work toward.
Well, I'm sure no one starts out feeling like they're going to do a hostile takeover of Bush Park, but it's nice to have the flexibility built into the system so that people can, where they see that there's not upkeep, where they see that beds are falling astray, and where we don't have enough staff to help to be able to shore those up. I also wanted to say, you had mentioned Director Fernandez, how many volunteers do we have on the citywide level for parks?
Oh, I think it's something on the order of 30, 40,000 hours a year is what we get-
30, 40,000 hours.
Hours is what we get a year in volunteer help for city parks.
I know we happen to have a fabulous coordinator-
Right.
-for that position as well. So, yeah, I would just really encourage us, if this is something that we're interested in carrying forward as a council in support with staff and with citizens, that we renew our pledge to parks through budget next year, that we really look and see what positions are needed and where we can work in partnership. If this is a true public-private partnership, then that means some of it's on us as well.
Thank you, Counselor. I really agree with your comments on this, and I was concerned also by Margaret Stevens' testimony, and I'm particularly concerned that we not use volunteer organizations to continue what was a recession-era decision to trim employees that were badly needed or still obviously badly needed, or we wouldn't have a group coming forward, a conservancy group coming forward, which really are often used in more dire circumstances than we see here, that this doesn't become a substitute for meeting our obligation to the parks. I think it's really important because while Bush has lots of volunteers, others don't have as many, and trying to create that kind of equity around the city is very, very difficult. And I think she pointed out the kinds of concerns that can come from relying too heavily on this kind of partnership as an infill and not meeting our basic obligation. I'm really kind of concerned, but I hope we will have reports on how this is affecting volunteer activity, and hopefully we'll see you come in with a budget that takes a look at why we were, at one point in a smaller system, had four horticulturists, and it just works great with one. Somehow, not that that rings untrue, it just doesn't sound right, you know, one of those situations. So if you, you know, I think you can help us out as we go through this. I'm certainly really excited. I mean, having watched Gretchen Carnaby and others, the work that's been done at Bush is just exemplary, and to see it have a plan that allows for more assistance from grants and other kinds of things that a 501(c)(3) has, and not be under the Art Association as their parent organization, but to have an organization devoted to the kind of work they're doing, I think really makes sense. But I really think the alarm that Margaret mentioned is worth paying attention to and keeping track of and keeping us informed of.
Right, and that is not the intent, it's not the intent of the conservancy, and certainly not the intent of the staff.
But I don't want it to be a side effect either, that we somehow starve those parks. We've, you know, and we have starved our parks. We're down to one pool, sort of, kinda.
Well, if you look, if I may, Mayor, if you look at the boundary, which is the area outlined in black, that is an area of the park that has a lot of historic elements, the trees that are planted there were, my understanding is, were designed by Lord Escriber, the rose gardens, et cetera. So we felt that that was the most important place to start because that's the place that can use a lot of additional tender-loving care with respect to looking at it, propagating plants that are historically accurate for that, which are not easy to come by given their age, to work on the rose garden, and to really, you know, focus in and get successes there. And then we've talked about moving to the Rhododendron Garden, and of course, the oak groves are very important to the conservancy as they are to us. So there's a number of things that we're looking at that are special and really over and above. We intend, our horticulturist is retiring soon. We intend to replace that position with an equally, a person with equal or greater, if we can, greater abilities in that area. So, and the other thing that's important to look at is that Jennifer Keller, our Parks Operations Manager, is actually on the board of the, so the intent is to be fully integrated in these things, that they're not a separate organization, but rather a positive addition to what we're doing in the park.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I understand the concerns that were expressed by Ms. Stevens and other people. In response, I would point out a couple of things. First one is that it's to be looked at every two years, so we're not giving away the Bush's farm, as it were. Number two, the organization has been around since 1991, and we're talking about the cutbacks occurred 2008, 2009, and before that, we had more folks. So this 501(c)(3) is just a way to make it easier for that organization to stand alone, get, well, their own rules and regulations, but also get contributions and everything else. And finally, I would point out that it's real clear that in the staff report, it says "ownership of the park continues to reside with the city, which retains ultimate authority over projects and activities in the park." So then in effect, kind of gives the city a veto if these people come and say, "We want to do this or that," and the city says, "We don't think that's a good idea." It's not going to happen.
Yeah, I think that one of the concerns I want to make clear, though, is it's who's doing the work becomes, I want to be cautious about that. I think we have to be sensitive to what's going on there. Okay, great. Oh, I'm sorry, Sadie.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, and thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to echo, one, the positive changes that a public-private partnership can bring to our city and the community capacity building that they can do, and the way that Director Fernandez has talked about capturing those volunteer hours. If we can quantify that, then we can make a very compelling case to council and the Budget Committee in terms of the need at a city level. But I also have a lot of respect for the concerns of Counselor Cook and Mayor Bennett and Margaret Stevens about the reduction of horticulturists at a city level. The neighborhood that I live in, the Grant neighborhood, we have a single park, and it's a city, it's a school playground during the day. So if you are a person living in multifamily residential, which we have a decent amount of in the Grant neighborhood, and you're set back by a parking lot and you don't have a yard, there's not a bench that you can sit on outdoors within easy walking distance. And so I love seeing the investment in Bush Park, but we have a real need for access to community green space in a lot of other neighborhoods in our city, particularly the ones that are in the northeast and kind of close in. They're lacking in resources, and they could use some city investment. So thank you for your attention to this.
Well taken, thank you. Okay. Ready, all those in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And Counselor Anderson?
I move the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2018-73 concerning the zero-tolerance policy at the border.
Second. Second by McCoy.
I actually came with quite a long speech, but I don't think I will give it completely because what people said here today pretty much made the points I wanted to make. I would specifically look at the words of Tom Ellis, Lori Doherty, Chalisa Swakhyer, Paul Chrisel, especially Paul's comments. I think those were all indicative of what we should be as a city, despite the fact that we may not be that as a nation at this particular point in time. And because of that, I think it's very important that at the local level, we do everything we can, and that's not just true in this area, but it's true in other areas where the current administration is not doing things to help people in America and people coming to America. So we need to start from the bottom up, not because we're not getting anything, well, we're getting something from the top down, but it's the wrong thing. I'm not going to read my resolution except to say that the whereases that are, take up the first page, are pretty much taken exactly from the resolution that I introduced, I think it was about a year and a half ago, that Mr. Chrisel referred to, that we passed unanimously declaring Salem an inclusive city. So if that resolution meant anything, we should pass this one too, because now we are putting into action the words we had before. I will tell you that I have been to two demonstrations on this matter. The first one was at the Marion Street Bridge late in the afternoon, and the second one was last Saturday down at the Capitol Mall, and both times I had a sign with me that was actually suggested to me by my wife. I had a sign that was a little more direct and lawyer-like, and she said, "Make people think," you know, approach their empathetic side. And so what my sign said was, "What if it was your family?" And I think that's what we all need to think. And Mr. Chrisel said that a bit, and I'm thinking, "Could it be my family?" Because my great-grandfather immigrated, legally or illegal, you don't know. He ended up in a small farming community in Iowa. He first did farm work, heavy manual labor, that maybe you could say, "He's taking jobs away from real Americans." But I didn't see any real American that wanted that job. He stuck with his community, his immigrant community. He never left that community. He never learned to speak English. My father helped him on the farm when he was young, and he could only communicate to my father by nonverbal directions. His wife learned English and was kind of, you know, the liaison between him and the outside American community. And how is that any different than the situation we have now? Hard workers who come here, who end up doing jobs that really aren't done by Americans, by citizens of the country, who in many cases cannot speak English, which was a requirement, actually, in 1906. English, speaking English was a requirement for immigrants, and who spend most of their life with their own community, within their own community, but came here for opportunities. And, you know, the only difference I can think of is of my great-grandfather who came here as an immigrant, is he came here from Denmark. He looked like me. He looked like most of us in this room. And this policy, to me, is overwhelmingly against people who are black and brown skin, and that's just not the way we should be or anybody should be. So I urge that we pass this resolution.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is the second one of these now. And in my early years on council, there were numerous ones dealing with things that really don't pertain to our position as City of Salem government. And so I will be voting in opposition to this and bringing forward a resolution at a future meeting on resolutions and motions that don't pertain to city operations.
Ready? I hope you will direct that to our governance or whatever, it's our Rules Committee, I guess. I appreciate that, thank you. Any further discussion? Committee, I guess. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the great privilege to spend the Fourth of July this year in Washington, DC. And I actually watched the fireworks from the Lincoln Memorial, from the steps there. And that was, I have to say, a profound experience for me. Watching us celebrate our country's birth from the Lincoln Memorial was amazing. And I couldn't help but think about this resolution or proclamation that we're about to vote on in that context. And it occurred to me as we walked, I walked past the White House to the Lincoln Memorial and listened to a concert that was being played there on the lawn by the President and others celebrating, and then going to the memorial. And it was such an interesting contrast to witness. And to Councilor Nagy's point, I think this is exactly relevant to our business here. I understand it's not as specific to a city policy or to a city practice, but every one of us has to stand up for what is right. And we have to stand up to what the values of this country are. And I think if every city council in this country did what we're doing tonight, it would send a message, and the leaders of our country would have to take notice, and they would have to respond, and they would have to, they would have to change their course. And we are headed in a direction right now that I don't like. And I'm very happy to support this resolution. Like I was saying, having witnessed the fireworks from the steps of the Lincoln Memorial, I can't imagine what President Lincoln would think about the way things are today. And he's a Republican. He's of the same party, but a totally different ilk from our current administration. And I'm happy to support this.
Okay. Councilor Cook?
Thank you. Just to second what my colleagues have said, I know that I can't help but feel even though we've passed similar measures, sometimes it feels like the more things change, the more they stay the same. And I know that we can look to see our similarities, whether it's from our immigrant backgrounds or from our stance on where our policies should or shouldn't go. I feel strongly that when we start dividing ourselves as a city or as groups of people, it serves no one's interest, except for the people that would seek to keep us divided. People that act as divisive forces don't have enough, don't have enough energy to be able to push their agenda across when we're united in our vision and in our purpose as a city to serve the people who live here. But as soon as they get us bickering and dividing and thinking, "Well, you're not with me," or "We don't have the exact same ideas," well, then they can run straight through whatever policies they want because we're too busy fighting each other instead of remembering our vision for the City of Salem. So I would just say to anyone that's hesitant, we just got done doing a lot of policy work on our policy agenda, and this is right along those goals.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, where are we? Information items. Okay, here we go. I just, I'm looking at Lisa, and she's thinking she's going to get out of here without answering the question.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on item number 6A, which relates toward tree planting projects. And I sent this question to staff earlier today, so I know they'll be prepared to answer it. And my question is, we're saying we want to increase the overall tree canopy from 18 to 23%. I understand how we're at 18. I'm just curious as to if the director could tell us how we landed on the goal of 23. And I know at some point, the council landed on that goal, but it was 213. The mayor and Councilor Nagy are the only ones who are here. So I'm just curious as to, how did that 23%, how was it arrived at?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilor. Thank you for feeding us the question earlier in the day so we could get you an answer.
You'd have an answer. Good. Nagy was going to tell us.
Some years ago. Some years ago, there was a tree canopy study done. And as a part of that, we also committed to every 10 years doing a canopy study. It's a GIS exercise based on aerial photography. But the original study showed what the existing canopy percentage was by neighborhood association. And a policy decision was made at the time to select where the 75th percentile was. So that, in fact, I have the report right here, was Sunny Slope Neighborhood at 22.9% canopy. Then, Northeast Neighbors, Fay Wright, South Central, and what is now Swan had greater percentages. And that's what created the 75th percentile. All other neighborhood associations were less than. The report and the goal to achieve 75% is a great tool for us, as we use not just the services of Friends of Trees, but now the investment of $100,000 a year to plant trees, to really focus first in those neighborhood association areas, particularly the Northeast, where there's very little tree canopy. You know, it allows us to focus in and start there, and then work to the rest of the community. So that's what that is about.
Okay. Councilor Nagy?
Thank you. And actually, just the discussions we had after that on a neighborhood basis as well. In, you know, SEMCA, we have the prison property, and a lot of industrial areas as well, where you really don't want to plant a lot of trees inside of the correctional facility, especially near the fencing, that those numbers, it would be best to look at it as an average citywide, knowing that some areas really couldn't come up to the equivalent of others based on business operations and other geographical, topographical type elements.
Right. But we're looking at all kinds of opportunities. So not just street trees, but can we plant more trees in certain parks? Can we plant trees at pump stations and reservoirs? I mean, so really, any, with, Friends of Trees has very specific areas that's in their contracts, and you can read the report. But for the other tree planting program, my direction to our staff is to look at every possible opportunity to increase the canopy, starting with anything that's city-owned property. So Rites of Way Parks, properties, you know, anything that we got, if it can take trees, we'll, over time, we'll look to plant them.
Okay. Councilor Hoy?
Thank you. I just want to thank staff and thank the Friends of Trees for this partnership. I think it's been amazing. And I get so much positive feedback from the residents in Northeast Salem, because as you know, we're, our area is the most lacking in tree canopy, and especially the Hollywood Drive trees. So many people comment about what an enhancement that's been to our neighborhood. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Any other discussion on these reports? Okay. Move on then to first reading ordinances.
Actually, it's second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, second reading.
Ordinance Bill Number 1318, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 6719 Devon Avenue Southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing...
This is right.
This one's right.
This is really good.
Okay. Prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Nagy?
Aye.
Councilor McCoyd?
Aye.
Councilor Osik?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Cook?
Aye.
Councilor Lewis is absent. Councilor Kaser is absent. And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Next item.
Ordinance Bill Number 1418, an ordinance declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 1338 and 1340 Wallace Road Northwest and Land East, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing Salem area comprehensive plan map designation, prescribing zoning, and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Councilor Nagy?
Aye.
Councilor McCoyd?
Aye.
Councilor Osik?
Aye.
Councilor Hoy?
Aye.
Councilor Cook?
Aye.
Lewis is absent. Kaser is absent. Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. I have no further public comment. We are adjourned.